Good evening. I would like to call this Planning Commission work session to order for Thursday, May 1st, 2025. My name is Jack Karun and I'm the co-chair of the Clark County Planning Commission. Before we begin tonight, I would like to announce that our Planning Commission sessions are hybrid, both in person and via WebEx. For virtual and in-person members of the Planning Commission and staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off or muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during this work session, but members of the public can watch and listen. This evening's agenda is planned as follows: Call to Order, Climate Element Update, Comp Plan Policy, Climate Element Chapter 14, Part 1, County Planning Policies. Then we'll have comments from the members of the Planning Commission and in Germans. So I guess we can start with Climate Element Update. Jenna K. And this Oliver.
It will be but Jenna and I, but I will make just a quick opening remark and then turn it over to Jenna. This is a project that the legislature tries several times to pass a climate bill to be integrated with the Growth Management Act. They finally did so in 2024, 23, excuse me. And by then, we have already started our periodic update, so we have to do some quick catch-up by the council or the county manager appointing a task force to help us in the work effort that we have to do to make sure we meet the requirement of this bill. I know some of you have been anxious to get started in reviewing the work of the committee. I must say that thank you for your patience. The task force, it took them almost 18 months or so to complete their work. And it was a very diverse group of individuals that came together and reached almost consensus in 90-plus percent of the goals and policies. There are about maybe four areas where they have various opinions, but I commend the work that they have done. There is CAG, and then there is Environmental Justice Group as well, who have made recommendations. I will also give kudos to Jenna, who's been working with the group. She was there guiding them, providing that guidance professionally and our consultant and facilitators that help us throughout the process. The group have made their recommendation. I don't know, I believe their letter also came to them where they strongly share with you the work that they have done, and I cannot commend them enough. We have started the process of having work session with the council, the Planning Commission, and eventually going through the adoption process. We are here to answer questions that you may have. What I will say is that the bill required the Department of Commerce to provide us guidance, because this is all new, if you will. But talking about climate change here in Clark County, I would say it's not new. Some of us that, you know, live here in Clark County, we have experienced severe flooding. It can go back to the 1996 flood. It was very bad. We were at that time talking about climate change and including potential and the impact of wildfire, excessive heat, and other various climate impacts, and the need to begin having conversation on how to come up with resilience way or adapted way to address the impact of climate change. So we won't bore you with that. Like I said, the legislature tried a couple of times and finally, knowing that if they're done, it's likely that there will be an initiative or some form of the public coming up with maybe a bill or provision that will be more strict. But in any case, this is what we have to work with. We now have to have a climate element, which will be Chapter 14 of our Climate Comp Plan Policy or chapter. So with that, let me turn it over to Jenna, and we'll be here to answer questions you may have.
All right. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Jenna K. with Community Planning. And I'll be, first, I'm going to give you an update on what's been going on with the project. It's been a while since I have presented to you all on it, so I want to do a little bit of a refresher and bring you up to speed. And then the next agenda item will be to actually start looking at the policies. So if we can go to the next slide. The plan for the presentation is to do a quick overview of House Bill 1181. This is intended to provide an overview of the legislation, excuse me, for those of you who are new to the Planning Commission with the requirements of this legislation. And then this will be a refresher for the rest of the group who've heard me talk about this before. Then we'll review the process that we have taken to get to where we are today. And then we'll wrap up the presentation with next steps and any questions. And then, like I said, we'll start to look at some policies after the presentation portion. Next slide. Okay, so we can go to the next slide, and we'll begin to review the key requirements of House Bill 1181. So as Oliver mentioned, this bill was passed into law in 2023, and Clark County is in the first wave of adopters of this legislation. So there's no city or county in the state who has implemented this yet. The bill's long. We've linked to it in the slide if you do want to look at it. But some of the key things that it did, it add a climate change and resiliency goal to the Growth Management Act. So GMA now has 15 goals. It requires Clark County to add a climate element to its comprehensive plan, and this element needs to address both resilience and greenhouse gas emissions reduction. And some other themes in the legislation include a need to address environmental justice, use best available science, and as Oliver mentioned, Commerce was tasked in the legislation to create guidance for local jurisdictions to follow to implement the bill. And the legislation then tells local governments, what we do has to be consistent with that guidance. And there's a mandatory due date of December 31st, 2025. Next slide. So for the resilience sub-element, the county has to come up with a list of goals and policies to be implemented over the next 20 years that will identify, protect, and enhance natural areas, identify, protect, and enhance community resiliency, address natural hazards exacerbated by climate change, and prioritize benefits for our most vulnerable community members. You all might recall that staff presented background information on the climate impacts back in June of last year, which are essentially the basis for our resilience policies. And so the impacts that we're planning for relate to seven hazards. So extreme heat, drought, wildfires, wildfire smoke, extreme precipitation, flooding, and landslides. Let's go to the next slide. And then for the greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element, the county needs to identify actions it is going to take over the next 20 years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled per person without increasing emissions elsewhere in the state. And these actions have to prioritize reductions that benefit over burning communities to maximize the co-benefits of reduced air pollution and environmental justice. And then also, as you may recall, we presented the results of the county's greenhouse gas emissions inventory to you in July of last year, where it showed that the county's larger sources of local emissions relate to gasoline and diesel related to transportation, electricity and natural gas related to the building industry, or building energy, excuse me, and tree loss related to agriculture, forestry, and land use. And so that's serving us the basis for our greenhouse gas policies. Also, back at the July work session, we mentioned that there's a need to include targets for these greenhouse gas emissions reductions according to the Commerce guidance. And we are expected to align with the statewide goal of getting to net zero emissions by the year 2050. And that statewide goal is written into RCW 78.45.020. Okay, let's go to the next slide. And then just as a quick reminder, this is the county's climate element, so it only applies to the unincorporated counties shown in blue on the slide. But our city partners have the same mandate or on the same timeline as us. So there's a lot of other climate planning going on around us in the county as well. And so we are sharing some resources for technical consultants, but every jurisdiction's coming up with their own policies. Next slide. Okay, so that was the quick recap of key things the legislation tells us we need to do. Next, I'd like to move into reviewing the process to date. So I believe you've seen this slide before. It's the overarching timeline for the Comprehensive Plan periodic update. And so this climate element is part of this broader project. It's, you know, we're doing it as part of the project to bring our comprehensive plan in alignment with current legislation. And so this climate element is, we're going to propose making it a new chapter in the Comprehensive Plan. And we've circled the item on this timeline where this fits in. So this would be new county Comprehensive Plan text and policies. So I'm not going to walk through the whole timeline because I believe you're familiar with it, but just want to make that point that this is a piece of this bigger comprehensive planning project. Next slide. All right, so big picture for this climate element work that we've been doing. To meet the requirements that I just outlined, we need to draft both the resilience and greenhouse gas reduction sub-element. And both of these elements require some background research and analysis, development of draft goals and policies, further review and refinement of those policies. And then eventually, they need to get incorporated into a written format that can look like a chapter in a comprehensive plan. And right now, we are at the star shown on this slide, where we are in the process of just, we're trying to wrap up drafting that element, the actual written chapter, and getting ready and getting materials ready for the adoption process. Okay, next slide. So with that bigger work plan in mind, just want to also look back on a few key items that have already taken place in the evolution of this project. And for those of you newer to the Planning Commission, if you have any questions about anything that's already happened, please let us know. We are glad to help bring you up to speed. But just as a reminder, the Comprehensive Plan project really kicked off in March of 2023, when the council adopted the Public Participation Plan for the Comp Plan. And then after we'd already started the project in May of 2023, that's when this legislation became law. And so after that, the sort of other items listed out on the left side of the screen here were sort of all these steps we took to get this project set up. We had some, we did an initial briefing with the council to explain what this legislation said and what it meant for the county. We did some initial interviews as part of a climate stakeholder assessment that then informed a climate public participation plan that the county council held a hearing on and approved in November of 2023. We then got our inter-local agreement with the cities and consultant contracts set up in December of 2023 and worked on forming our advisory groups in late 2023 to early 2024. And then moving to the right side of the slide, we spent most of last year into early this year working with our advisory groups, which I'm going to talk more about in just a moment, and also doing broader public engagement in the community throughout last year. So that's a broad brush. That was a lot of work for those two items, so I'll go into more detail on that in a moment. And then also, just as a reminder, I met with you all three times, kind of middle of last year, in May, June, and July, and that was to introduce you to the bill, look at the climate impacts to inform the resilience work, and then look at that greenhouse gas inventory to inform our greenhouse gas production policies. And I said, all right, we now have a lot of work to do with the public and advisory groups, but we'll be back. And so that's where we are now. We've kind of worked through most of our engagement and advisory group work, are trying to put that climate element together and are ready to start briefing you and the council on what's come out of that, which will lead into the formal adoption process eventually. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so I'm going to dive a little bit more into the detail on what happened with our public engagement and advisory group work. So I'll start with more information about public engagement first. So we conducted four phases of engagement related to the project last year. The first phase related to severe weather impacts. The second phase related to resilience policy concepts. The third phase related to greenhouse gas emissions reduction and air quality priorities. And then the fourth phase related to greenhouse gas emissions reduction policy concepts. Between county staff and the Project's Environmental Justice Coalition, we conducted more than 90 activities in 2024 across these four phases of work and heard feedback from about 2,000 people. We did write an engagement report for each phase. They are posted on our project webpage. The link to them is on the slide if you are curious and interested in seeing that feedback. The reports themselves are about five to 10 pages long, and then there's an appendix with each of them that has all of the feedback that was collected through the engagement. That's much longer. But if you look at these reports, you'll see they include a list of all the activities, what we did to collect feedback. You'll also see key themes that we saw when we reviewed all of the feedback we received. And you'll see that, you know, we heard from a lot of people from really different backgrounds with a lot of different opinions, and we heard from people in every zip code of the county across those four phases of engagement. But those are there if you are interested in, you know, seeing the feedback directly from community members. Okay, let's go to the next slide. And then a little bit more about our advisory groups. As you might recall, we formed three groups to help us with this project. The first group I'll talk about is the Community Advisory Group, or the CAG. This was a group of 20 community members who were appointed by the county manager. They represented a really wide range of interests. So included building, development, business, and industry interests, to environment, natural resource, and environmental justice advocates, to community advocates for things like healthcare and education. So if you click on the link that we put on the slide, it takes you to the webpage and it has a list of all 20 members. And Councilor Belkot also served as the council liaison to that group and was at many of the group's meetings as well. So this group was charged with using a consensus-based process to develop a climate goal and policy list recommendation to the county to implement in its comprehensive plan that's consistent with the requirements of House Bill 1181. The group met 12 times from February 2024 to April 2025, and they finished their work on April 7th. This group dedicated many hours in long evening meetings and provided a lot of feedback in between meetings to us because there was such a large volume of information, we couldn't get through it all, you know, just in the meetings. And from staff's perspective, our interest with this group was to have them talk through the issues that they didn't agree on. So we did a lot of sort of testing of like how supportive people were of ideas, and then where we saw the most sort of differences of opinions, that's where we would focus meeting discussions. And from our perspective, this group worked through a lot of really hard conversations and disagreements and did find a path forward in a lot of areas. So I think some of you may have listened into some of these meetings. So anyway, if you just listened, you would see that not everyone was on the same page, but they somehow found a way to reach agreement in a lot of places. This group also wrote a letter to you recently at the end of their process, which we just, you know, it's in their words, what they thought, and I imagine you'll hear from them more as this process continues. The second group I'll talk about is the Environmental Justice Coalition, or EJC. This group was made up of 15 community-based organizations who serve community members who are at higher risk to climate impacts. And the county contracted with them to help us with our community engagement and to help us meet the environmental justice requirements of HB 1181. So again, the link on this slide will take you to this group's webpage and it links to the 15 organizations that were involved. This group met 12 times from February 2024 to February 2025. So they wrapped up their work on February 3rd of this year. And in between meetings, this group was implementing community engagement work plans. So they each made a plan, it's sort of in parallel with county community engagement. They made a plan for those four phases on how they were going to engage with community members that they serve. And so, you know, that group helped with engagement. I mean, we reached way more people than we would have without them. And we reached people who we probably wouldn't have heard from otherwise. They held a lot of engagements collectively, including most of our engagement events that included other languages other than English. All of the feedback that the EJC organizations collected was then shared back with us on the project team and got folded into those engagement reports that I just mentioned. So the feedback they collected is in there as well. The other thing this group did is they helped guide the development of an equity lens for the county to use in its review of draft policies to incorporate environmental justice considerations into the draft policy list. So this equity lens had three overarching questions. The first being, who's most impacted by a policy positively or negatively? The second being, what does the data tell us, considering quantitative and qualitative data? And the third being, what are the ways in which a policy recommendation could be modified to enhance positive impacts or reduce negative impacts? So they helped us review the draft policies and their feedback got folded in as part of this process. They also wrote you all a letter towards the end of their process that was shared with you from their perspective as well. And then finally, our third group was the Partner Agency Team, or PAT. This was an interdepartmental and interagency team of technical reviewers made up of staff from multiple county departments, our city colleagues, people from the fire districts, school districts, hospitals, ports, regional and state agencies, and really was our sort of go-to group of people when we had questions or wanted additional review to just double-check what we were doing. So they provided feedback a few times over the past year. Towards the end of the year, they reviewed a full version of the draft policy list at the time. And then otherwise, you know, as things have popped up that relates to their area of expertise, we've asked them questions to help us along the way. All right, next slide. So you may be wondering, well, you had three advisory groups. How did you end up with one recommendation? So I just want to talk through how these groups work together. So the CAG is the advisory group who produced a recommendation that staff is going to be presenting to you all and moving it forward into the adoption process. So their task initially was to consider a lot of information and to develop an initial draft policy list. While they were doing that, the EJC was out in the community doing engagement. And once that draft policy list was created and the EJC had wrapped up their engagement work, it came back to them, they reviewed it through the lens of, okay, what did I hear from the people I was speaking with and asking those equity lens questions? So the EJC provided feedback on that policy list, and then it went back to the CAG for their final few meetings to, you know, do additional discussion and deliberation and then voting on their recommendations. Which brings us to where we are today, because those groups are both done now, and we're now bringing forward that CAG recommendation to share with you all to move forward eventually to council. Throughout all of that, you know, we were doing that broader public engagement and consulting with the Partner Agency Team as needed. And our approach was to fold that information, that got folded into the EJC and CAG's work. So that's how we kind of wove it all together to come out with a single recommendation from the CAG. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So I mentioned the CAG finished their work on April 7th and now has a set of policies to recommend for the climate element. They spent their last two meetings voting on goals and policies. They considered 156 items. And of those 156 items, they agreed to drop one item from the list. They had unanimous consensus and support for 151 items. And then they had four items where they did not quite have unanimous support. So for those four items, so for the things where they had consensus, it's moving forward to all as a recommendation from that group. For the four items where they didn't quite all agree, we are still sharing those with you all for consideration, but we'll also provide some additional supporting documentation that explains who voted how and an explanation of why people, you know, were not supportive of it. So that additional documentation is in the works and will be shared with you to consider. Okay. I want to introduce one more thing on the next slide, and then we'll start talking about the policies themselves. So this is to, if this wasn't on your radar, we want to make sure it is. We want to talk about Initiative 2066, or I-2066. So if you're not familiar, I-2066 was a ballot initiative that was approved in the November 2024 general election. It relates to natural gas access. And we pulled out sort of one of the key statements in it that relates to this project. And the initiative says, "A county shall not in any way prohibit, penalize, or discourage the use of gas for any form of heating or for uses related to any appliance or equipment in any building." So we started our work. This initiative didn't exist. Partway through the project, initiative passed, so state law changed. And then in March of this year, a King County Superior Court judge found I-2066 to be unconstitutional. So now, the moment it is not law. However, that's not the end of the story, because we are anticipating that this judge's ruling is going to be appealed and make its way to the State Supreme Court. But the timing of the procedures on that appeal are unknown. So we don't quite know when it's going to get there and when we'll have a decision from the Supreme Court on this initiative. So that means we don't really know how that timing will intersect when things get voted on for this project. So our job as the county is to continue monitoring of what happens with the appeal process with this initiative and to follow Department of Commerce's guidance regarding it. And so just depending on the outcome of what the Supreme Court decides and what Commerce is telling us to do, we just want to flag that the county may need to address greenhouse gas emissions related to the building and energy sector, so policies related to that topic further. So we just want to flag that, that that may happen, but it kind of depends on those other items and how this unfolds. We also want to be really clear that what the CAG voted and is recommending to you all is a set of climate element policies that were written to be consistent with both House Bill 1181 and I-2066. So we did some, after the initiative passed, we went back and reworked a bunch of the building and energy policies so that they were consistent with this initiative. So if in the future, staff feels like we have to recommend something for our compliance reason, we'll be clear that that's coming from us and not the CAG. So we just want to be very clear on that. Okay. All right, so let's start to talk about climate element goals and policies. I'm going to start with like the big picture overview. Then we're going to look at some of the policies today, but then I'm going to come back on June 5th, and we're Then we're going to look at some of the policies today, but then I'm going to come back on June 5th and we're going to talk through most of the policies at that future work session. So as you know, in every comprehensive plan element, there are two sets of policies. There are the countywide planning policies, which the county and city councils all need to approve. And then there are the county 20-year planning policies that just apply to the unincorporated county. And so starting with the countywide planning policies, we have 10 draft policies in this bucket that were assembled through a working group of staff from the cities, county, and tribe. And these policies are very logistical kind of in nature. They mostly restate legislative requirements and otherwise outline the coordination and collaboration between the various jurisdictions. And so these will, we'll look through these later today. And then there are the 20-year planning policies, which this is what the CAG's recommendation is for. So we have put a link to the CAG's recommendation on the slide if you want to start reviewing them early. This is, you know, the slides are on the PC meeting grid. They're also on the CAG's webpage. But we will come back and actually walk through those policies at your June 5th work session. The reason we're not quite ready to talk about them is we're in the process of taking the CAG, we have a big table, but we're now trying to figure out where we're going to put everything in the CAG plan and doing some reorganization. So we're doing that and then would like to present it to you in the format it'll be ultimately presented to you. But if you open the CAG's recommendation and look at it, you'll find that there are 32 goals and 123 policies nested under those goals. And each goal or policy is noted as being a greenhouse gas emissions reduction policy, a resilience policy, or both. And policies generally fall into seven categories. Health and well-being, green jobs, ecological stewardship, transportation and land use, buildings and energy, waste management, and county governments. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So sorry, this text is a little bit small, but this was supposed to be, you know, at a glance, if you, I just pulled out the main topic of those 32 goals to give you a flavor of what's in these policies. So I'll just read through these really quick. So relating to health and well-being, there are goals and policies related to a just transition, advancing environmental justice, ensuring that the most vulnerable communities don't bear disproportionate impacts, consultation with the Kalatindian tribe, regional tribal governments, and culturally specific groups, food economies, agriculture and landscaping, housing, air quality, and outdoor recreation. In the green jobs category, we have a goal and some policies on economic development and job generation. Relating to ecological stewardship, there are goals and policies related to trees, county plantings and green spaces, environmentally critical areas and open space, forestry, salmonids, water resources, stormwater, and public education on environmental topics. Relating to transportation and land use, there are goals and policies relating to reducing vehicle miles traveled, county vehicles, electric vehicles, resilience of the transportation system and resilient development. Relating to building and energy, we have goals and policies related to energy-efficient buildings, clean, renewable, and diverse building energy options, emissions from county buildings and facilities, and green building and sustainable building practices. Relating to waste management, we have goals and policies related to waste reduction, composting and recycling, emissions from county purchases, and using less and supporting maintenance, repair, and resale economy. And the county governance category includes goals and policies relating to policy implementation and the resilience of county operations. Let's go to the next slide. All right. So I mentioned that we're in the process of trying to organize where to put all these policies. So we just wanted to flag as a heads up that most of the goals and policies we are planning to put in this new climate chapter. But there are some that we are going to propose putting in other chapters. So for instance, there are some transportation policies coming out of this climate work, and we think we're probably going to put them in the transportation chapter in the CAG plan because it, from our perspective, it seems like that's the better organization. So we're working through that. Just more to come on that. Okay, so I'm almost done. Thanks for bearing with me. Let's move on to next steps. So based on where we are, we have a few loose ends to wrap up. We are starting to work with the county council to confirm direction on. I I mentioned we have to set, get to net zero by the year 2050. We also have to set some interim targets. And the council could decide they wanted to get to net zero sooner than 2050. So we, we're in discussion with them for, to just set those targets that are, you know, benchmarks to measure against as we go. It doesn't change the policies on guiding what to do. It's more just their direction on how fast they want the county to move. So we're working on that with them. And then a staff, we are working on finishing, integrating the climate element into the actual comprehensive plan document and getting materials organized and ready to go for the adoption process. And we are, while we're doing that, we are going to start reviewing the draft climate element goals and policies with you. So we'll start today on May 1st, looking at the countywide planning policies. We'll come back on June 5th to look at the goals and policies that are the 20-year county planning policies in the new climate chapter. And then as you have additional work sessions on chapters like transportation and land use and things like that, if there are climate policies we've put there, they'll get shared to you when those chapters get presented. And once we brief you and the council, we will be ready for the adoption process where you can do the formal, the formal hearing process before you make your recommendation. Okay, so I'm going to take a breather, but can take some questions before we go to the next, next part.
All right. Thank you, Gina. I'm exhausted just from the overview. You know, we have a lot of work coming our way. So I'll go ahead and open up to some of your questions. Kyle, did you have anything, questions you want to ask?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Is Mark online? I didn't see him.
Yes, I am. Is, I don't have any questions at this.
Mark, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Was it muted? Was that a no? Okay. Jeremy?
I have no questions.
Eldon?
I have some. Sorry. You mentioned that there's four goals that weren't to consensus. So when I took notes from the meetings, I had goal five, six, 24. I don't know what the fourth one was. Was it goal 19?
I think it's 23 is the one you're missing, but I can look that up and double check that, Eldon.
Yeah, because 23 had a lot of discussion too about using the term holistic.
Yes, so that's.
But also goal 19 also had that incorporated, that 15-minute communities. And remember, we didn't, the group really didn't come to consensus on that. Some wanted it, some didn't.
Right. So we have the, the language the group voted on posted, and they did end up all supporting the language they voted on, which did not include the 15-minute language in there. So anyway, so if you look at the, the document that has the outcomes, it shows which ones they approved, which ones they didn't, and the language that they voted on. Yes.
Okay. And then I was listening in on the council work session the other day too, and there, there was a pretty good discussion then about whether they're going to move the target up because the city of Vancouver is doing 2040, right?
Yes. So we'll have more to update you on once we have a chance to talk to them more. Yeah.
Do you think we'll know that by the June 5th meeting?
I'm going to guess no. But we can at least give you an update at where, where we're at.
Won't council have to have a hearing on that about moving the target date up? Or how does that work?
They could give us direction at a council time. And as a direction, and then we'll have a hearing on that through the hearing process. It's still going to come to you. And you got to weigh in on that and make a recommendation to them either to be more aggressive or to stay with whatever.
Okay, so I'll have to go through that process then. Okay, okay. So I won't be done by June 5th.
No, not, not that part of the process.
All right. And also, there was some good discussion too that I, I got with councillor. He brought up the idea about whether costs are going to be included in these goals. I got the impression that that's something you're going to be working on on each of the goals.
Well, I can, I can expand on what I was trying to say. So I think one thing to remember is comprehensive plan policies and goals, they are super high level, right, guiding policies. So it is very hard to put a number to a policy that's giving a general direction. What we have done related to cost is we went through a prioritization process with a earlier version of the draft policies. And cost considerations were part of that process. So we have some, it's pretty high level, right? This isn't very precise cost information.
Or something like.
Right, you know. So we do have that information, which I can point you all to, and we are going to try to repackage it so it's easier to find and.
But will it be brought into what we're going to see when it comes down to the, here's the goals and policy? Is there going to be any cost component to those?
So yeah, so we can share that information as supporting information. But I just want to set the expectation that it's still very high level, you know, because it's not super specific. Yeah.
Right, right. And then Oliver, in that meeting, you mentioned that achieving the net zero, is that actually going to be achievable by 2050? Because you mentioned that there's some technology that doesn't exist to do that. So.
Yes. The, the target is a target. And what I, what I meant by that is that some of this, you know, getting to net zero depending on where your baseline is and where you want to get to. It's likely that, you know, there may be the, the technology to get there will probably take long. That's what I mean by that. And if it's, if it comes faster, then it's likely that you're going to achieve your target. That's just my rationale for saying so because some may require, if it's in greenhouse reduction, having companies or industry sector to modify or do a couple of things differently. Some of that will require some new technology. And so will also require individual behavior. If you take appliances, for example, how long it took for new appliances to come online and for some people to begin acquiring that. And you get this letter sometimes from utilities advising you on new techniques and suggestion that you can take as a personal action to reduce your footprint, if you will. You don't go out quickly and acquire that. And as you know, technology changes over time, new things come online. So that's what, that's in the perspective that I made that comment, and I still believe in that.
Okay. But that leads credence to not setting the target aggressively for 2040 or 2045. I would think that council would take that into consideration.
Is it, sorry, is there any, if we, if we don't meet targets, is there any, like, is, does that, that just means we just didn't meet, meet the requirement? We didn't meet the target? Like, is there any enforceable action? Is there a penalty for not meeting the target if we set the target?
The the HB 1181, it has a, we have a five-year reporting requirement on our progress to the Department of Commerce. And it says something along the lines of Commerce can let us know we could be, you know, things, additional things the county could be doing. But it's not, it's not really more specific than that. So I think it's more the state wants to track how jurisdictions are doing and have the ability to make recommendations back to us. But at this point, we don't know really more than that.
And if I may, as with any bill, if we are not, the legislature may make changes to it. I don't know at this point, but is, that could happen. And you never know. They may come back and say there is a penalty for you not moving quickly. I don't know.
So current, so currently, there's no penalties in the, in the enforcement of this. It's just, we're just trying to do our best effort to, to meet the goals. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the Commerce guidance basically says align with, you know, make sure you're aligning with the statewide target. And you have to report to us every five years, you know, so there's nothing more specifically.
Everybody's trying, like, we're trying to figure this out, and so we'll just have to make an honest effort of meeting these requirements.
And yes, and they will be following our reporting on five-year interval. They're going to be reporting to the legislature. This is how.
Everybody's doing.
Everybody's doing towards that. If you're off by, let's say, 5%, whatever the number may be, they may encourage you to do a couple of things differently to help us get to that goal. That's how I think it will work.
Sorry for stopping on you, Eldon.
No, that's all right. But, but if we don't submit the climate in the comprehensive, that, then the legislature could come down on us pretty hard then.
Well, if we don't submit, that's a different question. And I know Chris is not here. It means that we did not meet our obligation to have a climate element. And if we are challenged, which is likely, then we will be out of compliance. You know, so, and that comes with some penalty. Oh, Chris is online. Okay. Thank you, Chris. I hope I'm answering the question appropriately, but feel free to chime in.
Yes, that sounded like an appropriate answer to me. If we fail to submit,
Yeah, she's agreeing with me.
Yeah, we will instantly be out of compliance and probably invalidated.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
No more questions. Brian?
No real questions, but a comment, listening in on a couple of the CAG meetings with you, Jenna leading in. I think, was it Susan that was? Susan Ellinger was? Or maybe it was a consultant.
Who, who was facilitating?
Yes.
Yeah, we had a consultant helping us. Yeah.
You guys did an amazing job with 20-plus people and so many diverse opinions on every item. It was just interesting to listen to and, and how you, how you walked them through a consensus process. Really well done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. On definitions, are we going to have some very clear-cut definitions on some of these terms that are guiding us? Like written out, like as kind of a, a metrics? Part of it is, a lot of these words seem very squishy to me. Like, you know, resiliency, what does that mean? What is the, you know? And, and how are we, like, when we talk about equity and disadvantaged communities? And I mean, we all have kind of maybe our own mental picture of what that is, but it's not necessarily a good benchmarking metrics of what I believe versus what somebody else believes. So I guess that's kind of, I'm assuming that's going to be in there, but.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. And I, and I remember you bringing this up last year. Yeah, no, it's a good question, and I remember you bringing this up last year, I think, when we first introduced this to you all. So we did develop a glossary with the CAG as we were working with them because there were, you know, as questions came up and. So we do have sort of a working glossary we've been using. And I think we need to figure out which of those terms should we actually add to the glossary of the comprehensive plan? And we probably have more in there right now than we need, but several terms are were added into the Growth Management Act's definition. So, you know, we are using the state's definitions. They still may be squishier than you like, you know, like, I think there is a, there is a squishiness to several of these terms. So anyway, so we will. You'll see some of that and we also can. Anyway, but we welcome your feedback too, if there's additional terms that you feel like are unclear.
For sure, and it sounded like when you talked about the equity lens a little bit, that you had some some little more broader benchmarks, like, okay, that starts to make a little more.
Yeah.
Sense. And then when we talk about specifically resiliency, I immediately went to like transmission, like the grid. Is kind of a thing, is that an element that will be that was looked at? Like, you know, because as we've moved to primary electric. Infrastructure and then and then all the news of the data centers and how massive all that stuff is and how. Destabilizing that some of those things can be come to our grid when we're resiliency, is that part of the things that that you guys looked at?
Yeah, so the commerce guidance led us through a very long list of, you know, different aspects of the community to consider. So that did include utility items. However, it is pretty confusing because the county only has authority over certain things, right? Like, we don't regulate the utilities, right? You know, so we did also have to be careful on only. Really deeply considering policies that are within the county's authority. So the utilities will definitely be key partners on working together and implementing. I I will say, we'll we'll get to looking at like the building and energy type policies. The CAG did really, they really did want to push for a diverse source of energy sources, you know. And did consider several aspects of resilience, you know, how do you balance the resilience and the reducing emissions? And so, yeah, so maybe more as we walk through the policies, you can see what we did.
And then we talked about like the cost benefit. I had written down that of just creating. A cost benefit high-level matrix, right? That we're actually, that we have some goalposts, some guiding things of. If you can get 85% you know of something done, you know, for the first $100, but to get that last 15%, it's another $10,000. That that there's maybe some principles that we can incorporate within this that actually is like, here's some guideposts of like how we would evaluate. A cost-benefit analysis. I mean, because then, because then, because you at least need a principle in which you can apply then later to, are we making everybody get heat pumps? Or is there a some a better way? Because, you know, there's. Does that make make sense? But there needs to be, there needs to be some kind of policy principle that sets some kind of bookmarks or bookmarks or, you know, bookends. In order to evaluate that.
Yeah, so I think, so at our June meeting, when we look at some of the specific policies. A few things, I think we can bring the sort of high-level cost information that we have to to share with you. We did, we do have some policies that are kind of in line. There's still maybe more high-level than what you're you're thinking. I think actually we have a sort of an overarching equity policy that came out of the environmental justice work. Where we we outline sort of key principles for implementing these climate policies. And, you know, one of the key things we heard over and over again was you can't make things less affordable, right? Like, making sure that as you implement these, you don't financially stress people more is really important. So we, anyway, you'll see a policy that has that as like as a principle. So we have some of that in there. And then we have some other policies that basically direct the county to figure some of this stuff out. So again. We, this was so much work, it's so high level, we're not figuring out the how, you know, at this stage. That's once some policies are adopted, we then work on implementation and part of that is the, okay, we're supposed to promote XYZ. Let's come up with a way to do that, right? And then that would come to you all as something to consider in the future. So I think it'll be interesting at the June 5th work session to start looking at those. So that what I'm saying maybe makes a little more sense. And I think it's me beginning at some of what you're you're saying.
Great, thank you so much. Is there any other questions? Oliver, anything to add?
No. In this type of work, sometimes the only thing I would say is that a cost-benefit analysis is often very challenging. Because the variety of things one can do. And if you start breaking them down into various categories, for example, if you live in. Area that is prone to wildlife, there are certain things you have to do, for example, training your trees. Not landscaping closer to your house, there are just so many things that you can do on your own or you can hire someone to do. And the benefit of that, I don't know how you measure it until something happens and then your house happened to be saved because of those actions that you took. So there are various ways to look at cost benefit and often it's hard to come by without really knowing. What. Individuals can do on their own or what. Utilities can do on their own, if you take it for example now, some utilities are beginning to. Ask for. Protection, if you will, from lawsuit and other things, so there's so many ways to look at cost benefit. And we will do our best in some areas where we think there is opportunity to provide you some. General idea of what. Costs or benefits of some of these policies may may be. But I know in something like this is is challenging to put a price tag on on something. Because like I said, some of it is going to be driven by individual behavior. When. EV, for example, came out. You can't get one for $80,000. Not a lot of folks could afford one when it first came out. And gradually standardization and reducing costs of people are still going to be able to acquire them through some subsidy and things like that. So but. Some would tell you, you know what? I it it may just be how they feel, you know, I'm driving past gas station now, I don't have to stop. But they're also using electricity from their house to charge the car. So how do you measure the cost benefit? You know, there are just so many ways to look at this, but we will do our best to where we can.
Excellent, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
There's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you, Ron. Oh, do you have more? What did we miss?
We have one more topic.
What's that? I missed, it wasn't on. I have two different agendas.
Much quicker and as Jenna indicated in my, we are not closing yet, but we provided you a link. Now, I know, like I said, you're anxious to start reviewing the policies. Providing you the link will give you an opportunity to look at on your own, review them on your own and. But let's focus on the county-wide planning policy and then we'll see where we are.
So just one question then, on June 5th, have you guys talked about how you're going to be presenting this to us? I mean, here's all these goals and policies, are you going to do it by? Sections? Under here or like all the goals and that or?
We have not figured that out yet, so we will be working on that so that hopefully it's not too overwhelming.
Yes, well, that's what I'm leaving up to, I don't want to have, you know, here you go, here's 151. Okay, you got two hours.
Yeah, so we will be working on that and if we need additional sessions or so forth, we will, we will do that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so. Okay, so for this item, as Oliver was saying. For the, we're gonna review, start to review draft climate element policies. We're just gonna look at the countywide planning policies today. And just a few things, I know you all have been looking at policies for other chapters, so just a few things that are different in this table. So the other chapters have had two columns, you know, on one side it has the existing text and on the other side it shows the changes. Because this is a completely new chapter, it's just all new proposed policy language, that's why you only see one column of text. And the the overarching rationale for all of these is House Bill 1181. Which is now codified in the Growth Management Act and mandates this new climate element and has lots of requirements, you know, associated with it related to resilience. Greenhouse gas emissions reduction, environmental justice, best available science and so forth. So that's the overarching rationale. But I will still give a little bit more context for each of the of the policies. Okay, so let's start with 14.1.1. So this policy here is naming the jurisdictions who have to create greenhouse gas emissions subsegments under HB 1181. So you'll notice it's all the jurisdictions except for Yakalt and La Center. They are small enough that they are exempt from having a greenhouse gas emissions plan. And then it basically outlines the key requirements, this language is basically directly out of the legislation. So that's what this this policy is doing, is stating the who has to do the greenhouse gas emissions planning in the county and the core requirements of that. So that's what that policy is. 14.1.2. This policy is just restating the requirement that those jurisdictions who are creating greenhouse gas reduction subsegments. That we're doing so with the aim of reaching net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 in alignment with the statewide goal. And also stating, you know, that individual individual jurisdictions may choose to be more ambitious than that, such as the city of Vancouver has chosen to do that. And then the second sort of part of the policy is more around coordination. And so it's talking about jurisdictions using a consistent methodology to measure greenhouse gas emissions progress over time. And it references the inventories that we've most recently all created. So again, this was sort of, how are we going to coordinate as a group of jurisdictions moving forward and as consistent a way as we can? You know, it's possible cities may annex parts of the county, so as much as we can have consistent methodologies, that's going to be helpful. All right, so the next policy is 14.1.3. This again is a coordination policy and it talks about jurisdictions who are doing the greenhouse gas reduction subelement. That we are going to collaborate with the Regional Transportation Council on developing regional vehicle miles traveled per capita reduction targets. And a methodology for how we're going to measure that over time, because as you might recall, the the VMT reduction is part of this law as well. And that, you know, each jurisdiction will have VMT goals and policies in them that are in alignment with this regional. Any of this regional VMT work. Policy 14.1.4 is stating the requirement out of HB 1181 that. Oh, no, sorry, 14.1.4 is just talking about the greenhouse gas reduction subelement jurisdictions. We're going to set five-year incremental targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and. Five-year incremental objectives for reducing VMT. Okay, policy 14.1.5 is stating the requirement out of HB 1181 that we have to submit progress reports to Department of Commerce every five years. 14.1.6 is a coordination policy on coordinating with the Southwest Clean Air Agency on reducing air pollution. 14.1.7 is, this is where we switch over to the resilient side of things. And so this policy is stating the core requirements out of the RCW related to the resilience subsegments that all the jurisdictions need to meet. So that's what all of that text is. And then 14.1.8 is a policy that, you know, talks about all the jurisdictions working to improve environmental justice. Again, drawing on the language in the in the bill. 14.1.9 is a coordination and collaboration policy on how all the jurisdictions commit to working together on developing our climate elements and in working and implementing them. And then 14.1.10 is regarding the jurisdictions committing to consult with the Kalis Indian Tribe. In development of climate elements and implementing climate elements. So those are the 10 draft countywide planning policies and our plan is to, we will have an updated version of this table with the 20-year planning policies for your June session. So glad to take questions.
Kyle, did you have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions regarding this sub-element, I mean, mostly seem fairly straightforward.
Mark?
I have no questions either.
Jeremy?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So you mentioned Yakalt and the center, their size doesn't currently meet the requirements to be in this. So like with with their their allocation of projected growth, when do they get to be of current, the appropriate size?
I think the threshold was six, they have to have a population of 6,000 people or more. I don't know, Jose or Oliver, if you remember off the top of your head what they're projected to be in 20 years.
Because I'm pretty sure they're projected to be bigger than that.
But let us, let us double check that.
Let's double check that, I'm not sure that Yakalt will be. La Center perhaps, we'll check, but the. I believe when this was done, they would have used 2020 census, but let's double check on the allocation.
I'm just curious on like, when, when, like, because you'd have to, you'd have to revise the policy or would you not?
The legislation kind of spells out, I think it would probably be on their next, the next comp plan update, it would.
So, okay, so if they don't meet it at the, when we do this policy, then they're kind of grandfathered in for the 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 whole 20-year plan, so it's not a.
Yeah, if they don't meet it this cycle. If in. When we started, when the county and the local jurisdiction starts the net comp plan and they meet that threshold, then they will be required to. Do maybe the resilience or whichever one that applies to them. The same is true, we have, for example, 39 counties in the state. And some of them are not GMA county just by population. And not to pick on Carless County, for quite some time, their target was to hit 100,000 in terms of population for them to be able to do GMA. And often they would say, oh, no, they haven't reached 100,000, they haven't reached 100,000. But when the census came out, I think the last census came out, they reached that threshold, now they're required to, so that's how this will work.
Okay, yep. And so we, another question, and when it revolves, evolves around, revolves around greenhouse gas emissions. I know you, we, you had a study on, you had a group helping us out with the the base level greenhouse gas emissions. But could you go a little bit further into like explaining how we're going to measure that and then? Just like high level, I don't, I don't need to get into, just a refresher for me.
Sure, yeah, so we, following Commerce's guidance. Sure, um, yeah, so we um following Commerce's guidance, um we did a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which is an accounting exercise on trying to measure greenhouse gas emissions for the county. Um, and it was based on twenty twenty-two data, so that's our baseline, which we will uh expected to measure against moving forward. And so periodically, we're going to need to update that inventory essentially to see what the emissions level is. So that's at a high level, the, I think, most straightforward way to over time benchmark how you are doing.
So um I know the county is, well, th- these are count, we're talking about countywide policies. And so, because the the greenhouse gas emissions will be countywide, it's be hard to differentiate what or is it easy to differentiate between municipalities?
Well, we we now each have, except for Yakult and La Center, all the other jurisdictions, we now each have our own inventory using um uh and we have the same consult, Vancouver already had an inventory, but all the other jurisdictions, we had a single consultant. So it's, you know, the exact same methodology.
Okay, um, and then uh could you explain uh ha- re-explain net zero, like what, like what what are the procedures to get to net zero, like that concept uh a little bit more to me? So just to refresh my memory on how that works.
Yeah, so uh the concept of net zero emissions, so um based on our twenty twenty-two data for the county, um we had local emissions of about one and a half million metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, so one and a half million um is a number. And our job is to get that to zero by twenty fifty, but it's not absolute zero, right? So the expectation is there are some emissions we can't, you know, get rid of or will be very hard or very expensive, right, to um eliminate. And so um, you know, but you can also sequester like trees, right, help sequester emissions and things like that. So it's the, how do you balance um so that?
And they know how much like each tree sequesters.
Right, we make estimates, we make estimates on, yeah.
I, you want to jump in on that?
Has the county done that? I mean, you you've given us a gross amount. Do we know what our real net zero value is right now?
Um, that inventory did uh take tree sequestration uh into account. Um, and it also took into account, like um the utilities also um do some I don't know if technically offsets the right term, but I'm going to use it for lack of a better term. Um, you know, like Northwest Natural does some offsetting of their emissions. So those kinds of uh items were factored into that inventory. So we do have a number on, you know, how much we think the trees are sequestering in the county and things like that.
So the one point five million metric tons?
Is a net number. That is a net number, yes.
Well, what was the gross n- number?
Um, I would have to look at the report, but I couldn't get back to you.
And the, and then I just had one, one more question on the the vehicle miles traveled. Um, so obviously, we're we have been directed to to reduce the vehi- vehicle miles traveled per capita, so but I just, could you explain a little bit? I know this is just a policy thing, but how do, how do we, what what are something like the sample, like objectives or targets? How like, how do, how do, how are we going to implement? Um, because it, this strikes me of like um changing people's behaviors in in ways. And so I'm just curious on how, what what's the county's plan on how to change people's behaviors from driving? Like, is that, it's in our community planning, I would imagine. I don't know. If you could touch on that a little bit, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, and I guess before I answer your question, just to add, I, you know, the legislation has this VMT reduction. It doesn't have a specific reduce it by this much number written in. Um, but it basically means you can't just expect people will start driving electric vehicle, you know, that that's the solution for the transportation emissions. You um that as as the population continues to grow in the county, on average per person, we're driving less. So, you know, I think there's a a few things, we do have a whole suite of policies that we'll start reviewing with you all um next month. And, you know, it includes things from improving our other options, you know, working with C-TRAN and things like that to, for those people who live near bus lines, right? Make it more convenient, actually make it a, an option where it's easier for people to say, yes, I, that's the more convenient thing for me to do. Um, so there's um sort of that piece of make your alternative transportation options better um so that some people may choose uh not to drive. Um, and then, you know, with the land use planning, you know, how do you have more places in the county that it's more walkable, where you'd be like, oh, let's, let's walk to dinner as opposed to hopping in the, in the car type thing? So again, th- these aren't necessarily going to be, the policies may be different depending on where you are in the county, right? We're not, we're not going to make the rural area a walkable, you know, compact community, right? But in the urban areas are there places where we can do that better? So it's a combination um of things where on average, hopefully that should bring the VMT down.
And and how do we mea- how do we measure vehicle mile?
Oh, um, yeah, so we are gonna have to work with the Regional Transportation Council, um they oh, and and Washdot, um they have uh folks who do VMT modeling essentially on the whole transportation system. And so um, I don't know, Jose, Oliver, or Harrison, who's online, who want to expand on that. But um basically, we have technical experts at Washdot and RTC who um they can run the regional and look at the regional data to where they're, you know, they're getting traffic counts and things like that on various roads um and can share that information back with us. And then we have our population information so we can figure out per person essentially.
But essentially, we don't have that number now, though.
Um, we, we don't have, um, well, we have some VMT data.
Washdot has some numbers, yes. Washdots has some numbers. Those are the uh agency that we are relying on. They have some statewide and I think countywide as well, and RTC can provide that per capita.
But we don't have one for Clark County, though.
For Clark County?
Clark County.
We, um, we do, I don't know it off the top of my head, but we do have um VMT numbers for the county.
I I have no further questions, thank you. Ellie, did you have anything?
Could you point me in the direction where that VMT number, Jenna or Oliver, could you email me?
Uh, yeah, let us follow up um with you on that.
All right. The other questions I had, Jeremy already asked them.
All right, Brian?
Got no questions. Um, yeah, just uh, uh, real quick, oh, well, the whole vehicle miles traveled, I think we could probably get really good information. We just call it like Google or one of the, one of our cell phone providers or how you, the metadata that's out there. It's, I mean, they can tell how many people go to Fred Myers and for what duration and who they are and where their zip code from is. So I think the data's out there, it's just a matter of requesting what we actually need, but I think we get, there's highly specific stuff out there, which is scary.
Yeah, there's, there's, well, there's, and there's basically two key data sets. There's, gosh, now I don't remember what it stands for, the HPMS data. There's, there's like um a data set that is very consistently collected on major roads in the county that we have. And then we have, you can purchase, right, the the data that's being collected by things like phones and things like that, which the challenge with that, while it's very useful and can give us good insight, we don't really, it could change at any time and being able to it, we, it's a bit of a black box, right, in terms of how the companies are, you know, if they change their algorithm or something like that. So um it's useful in some ways, but may change over time and may not be as consistent.
And and we were talking about the um, um, the reaching the net zero, are, do, is there a if people get an electric car, do we consider that a baseline zero emissions?
For electric vehicles, um, we um for electric vehicles, uh, we measure, we have to then go look at the power being used to charge them. And so it depends on uh where the utility is at. Um, so we do have some emissions associated with electric vehicles, because we know how many are uh registered in the county, right? And then um we know the fuel mix from Clark PUD. And so we do estimate emissions associated with that. So as uh Clark PUD um has fewer and fewer emissions with their, the electricity uh sources, those emissions would go down for electric vehicles.
So, but the, but we're not automatically assigning the carbon footprint of that vehicle with zero miles on it w- when it lands in Clark County. So I I guess I could, my my question is like, because basically the the data shows that driving an old used car is better than buying a new Tesla um for the first tw- for the next twenty years. So like, if I went and got rid of my truck, bought a Tesla, it takes twenty years for me to to beat the carbon emission savings of just using my old gas guzzling vehicle. And so I just wonder like how finite are we getting, or like we're actually looking at actual carbon emissions or the current air emissions in the feel-good portion and if that's, if that's being captured.
Right, so um our inventory did include, we we did also measure um emissions that are um being created elsewhere but tied to purchases of people living in in the county. Um, however, this law is focused on the emissions being produced in the county. So um, so in terms of HB eleven eighty-one, we're, we're focused on the emissions from the use of the the vehicle. Um, but we do have some, but we do have some uh data on the the impact of purchases. Um, and we do have some policies that do sort of encourage the, how do you maintain what you have and use less? Because we do know there is an impact, you know, globally, even if it's not here. Um, so, yeah.
Thank you, that's all I had. Anybody else? Am I missing anything on the agenda?
No, good questions. Um, I don't have anything more to add. Uh, we all observed during the COVID, when there was less driving, the impact of that even on air quality. Uh, so there are real measurable uh uh things that are out there. I'm not saying we should return to COVID era so that we can be driving less. I'm not suggesting that, but during that time, there was very good data collected just based on the fact that uh fewer people were driving and folks were walking from home and other things were happening. And the air quality around here was much, much better. Um, and folks were driving much less, just as an example that uh behavior do uh change our environment, whether it's in air pollution or air coma, travel, those type of things. I was surprised when the data came out uh on air quality and uh driving habit and so forth during the uh COVID and then what happened after the COVID. But it's just an example of data that is out there and really getting to the link. Um, we also provided that same link to our council to start reviewing the policies and where you have questions. We, Jenna uh and other staff, it's not only Jenna, but Jenna have done the uh, the majority of the work. I want to thank Public Health, uh they provided us a staff and helped fund the work that we did. And then we also have uh another staff uh in my shop, Harrison, who is also helping on the transportation piece. So a lot of hands, and again, my sincere thanks to uh the individuals that, members of our community who spend their evenings, just like you do, volunteering and come up with the the recommendation. I commend the work that they have done. We are the first twenty twenty-five adopters and I don't want to um continue to say how much we have done, but I sincerely believe that like other counties are reaching out to us and asking, oh, how did you guys do this? And what lessons can we learn from Clark County, those that are twenty twenty-six adopters? But hopefully we will um have this chapter completed and hopefully it will be very successful. I'm optimistic that it will be.
So Oliver, did I read in the paper that, that was it you or council were requesting to have an extension for the when the comp plan will be done due to the uh resource land study?
It was our council. Uh, they asked um us to ask Commerce, and we said we will ask, but we don't believe that Commerce has the authority to grant extension, only the legislature can. The council asked our senior uh policy analyst to coordinate with the county lobbyists to also ask. And that effort was made, but we didn't get extension, so we are back to, oh, no, before, but it was the act, it was the council, not me in particular, yes, yep.
All right, anything else?
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Sure.